Hi, Paul.
You are well, I hope.
Doing all right. You?
Yeah.
Hi, Amber.
Hi.
This is a special meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. We have a small agenda today. First on our agenda is the execution of the due diligence testing contract with Anderson Hollis. We have an emergency elevator expenditure for repair and then a board of health update with an agenda to follow from our public health director, Colleen Nelson. So with that, we will go ahead and get started. First on our agenda today is the execution of the due diligence testing contract with Anderson Hollis. We have Katie Welter and Chris Floyd here from Rocky Mountain General Counsel that can walk us through what this contract is for and also Wells Squire from Anderson Hollis Architecture. So with that, Chris and Katie, will you I'm sorry, Nan Anderson also just joined us. So with that, if you will walk us through this and our next steps.
Thanks. Katie, are you able to, do you have audio now?
Yes.
I know she texted me. Okay, there you go. Good.
Having some issues there. I just want to confirm that I believe you should have two contracts. One is for due diligence, site due diligence. The other is for a site needs reassessment, backfill plan for the existing courthouse and preliminary schematics for the Justice Center. Do you have both those contracts, Commissioner Marcello, or just the due diligence one?
Let me grab my envelope real quick here.
Both contracts were in the envelope I delivered to you, Commissioner Marcello. So I hope they're both there.
Okay, I do. I have them both.
Great. So why don't we go ahead and cover the due diligence contract to begin with? That contract is to perform what we would call preliminary due diligence on two sites that are remaining candidates for Justice Center project. And the due diligence, which I will allow Anderson Hollis to go into greater detail if they wish. But the preliminary due diligence amounts to cost estimating for necessary infrastructure to both sites. Both sites are within city limits, but will still require a significant infrastructure investment. And the commissioners wish to be able to compare those sites in terms of water, sewer, electrical that the capacity Justice Center would need, as well as, of course, gas and internet service. And so that's a major part of that contract as well as evaluating the sites for ingress and egress and potential sighting of the Justice Center itself. Wells or Nan, do you have anything to add to that?
I, go ahead, Nan. I'll defer to you. Thank you.
Yeah, that covers it, Katie. Thanks. Okay, great. And the proposed costs, the estimated cost for that contract is $59,253. And I would just note that all of the cost of that particular grant would be paid for without county match through the underfunded courthouse facility commission grant, which was earmarked specifically for due diligence in contemplation of a site for the Justice Center.
Okay.
There are questions on that?
I do not. And that due diligence testing you were talking about is covered at 100% from the underfunded courthouse grant?
Yes. And, you know, I just want to be clear that this does not include any particular testing. It's really about cost estimating for infrastructure build out, traffic and ingress egress analysis. I would just note that those are costs that would have to be incurred as part of the project construction regardless of whether we did it now or later. And we're proposing to do it with two sites so that the commissioners can make an informed decision based on those factors that we would learn from the due diligence. Okay. But yes, entirely covered by the underfunded courthouse facility commission grant that the county was awarded last December.
And Katie, we're still waiting for the approval for, from the rail yard site to actually access the site, I believe.
And actually, we have received that. We received that just a couple of hours ago.
Okay, great.
Good news.
Good news. Thank you, Katie. I don't have any further questions. This is Sarah Mudge.
Thanks, Sarah.
Commissioner Glenn, do you have any questions?
Does this mean that we don't have to go through the eminent domain process?
No, this is independent of that process, Commissioner Glenn. So the eminent domain process is intended to allow the county access, physical access, onto the Harrison work site, the Harrison in Monroe site owned by Union Pacific Railroad for the specific purpose of conducting environmental testing, geotechnical testing, and land survey. And so the work that Anderson Hollis is proposing to do under this contract would not require them to actually go on the Union Pacific own site. So I guess there are two independent matters to consider, but maybe what you're asking is if you approve this work, does it have any effect on the eminent domain process or any work that might happen as a result of that? And the answer is no. They're separate from each other.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner Glenn, for clarifying that. That was an important point. With that, Katie, can you just clarify for us how we got to the point of having this contract? It is a contract based off of the bid document that we had opened in March, correct?
Yes. This contract, the request for proposals to fulfill these services were released through an RFP process, a competitive bidding process, which Anderson Hollis won.
They were the only bidder on the project, correct?
Yeah, I believe that's true. And I would just also add that following an RFP process was, a competitive bidding process, was a requirement of the grant, the underfunded courthouse facility grant.
Thank you.
We did have multiple inquiries about the RFP, but in the end, we just had the one bid.
Wonderful. And we do have a history with Anderson Hollis Architects. They have done work on this project before. They're very familiar with Leadville and Lake County and the project and very invested in the project, I would say, as well, and the success of the project. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the contract for the due diligence on the proposed sites with Anderson Hollis Architecture. Moved. Second, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further conversation amongst the board or discussion among the board at this point, Commissioner Glenn?
Yeah, I'm still confused about the process as far as Anderson Hollis gaining access to the property. That will have to be done under the eminent domain portion. Is that not true?
Um, Commissioner Glenn, go ahead.
Sure. Sorry. So Commissioner Glenn, this is Nan Anderson. We've got two properties, one that we were waiting for access to, which isn't absolutely necessary for this contract, and that was access to the rail yards property. Because we can really do this civil work, this initial figuring out where the gas line needs to come from, what the water situation is there, what the power access to the site needs to be. So we can figure all that out without actually stepping foot on the rail yards property for the rail yards. Same is true for the Union Pacific property. But, so under this contract, we don't need to set foot on either property. When you do need to have access to both properties is in the next phase of the due diligence, which, as Katie pointed out, would include that survey work, the actual ground digging work to figure out what the environmental issues are associated with both sites, and finally, to figure out geotechnically what kind of soil bearing capacity there is on either site for an eventual building. So the current contract, we don't really need to step foot on either property, but the next step in the due diligence process, you would. And that's where the eminent domain comes in.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Glenn, just to be clear, the county has not obligated itself to do that work yet. So that we, there have been no contracts signed for environmental testing, that geotechnical drilling or land survey. That would all depend on how the eminent domain process is carried out.
Wonderful. Thanks for clarifying that, Nan and Katie. Commissioner Glenn or Commissioner Mudge, do you have any further discussion or questions on this contract that will be funded through the underfunded fund?
No, thank you, Commissioner Marcello.
No.
Okay, thank you. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, okay. All those opposed? All right. Seeing none, all those were in favor of that contract with Anderson Hollis. We have a second contract here with Anderson Hollis. Katie, will you walk us through this, please?
Sure. So this contract is to, it covers three different functions or three different major tasks. One is to conduct a needs reassessment for both the jail and the courthouse spaces. So back in 2015, 16, some preliminary efforts were made on this front. But this would be a deeper dive to find out, based on current data and current information and current programming needs, how large and how many rooms and how many jail beds and the nuts and bolts of space for the jail and the courthouse, the Justice Center. So that's part one, the space needs assessment. Part two is to complete, do what's called initial schematic design, which is sort of the first step in the design of the facilities themselves. And I'll let the architects tell you more about what schematic design involves, but that's component two of this contract. And then part three is doing what's called a backfill plan for the existing courthouse. So we heard, we've heard over 2016 and since then, that one of the big concerns and questions that the community has is what's going to happen to the existing courthouse? Part of this proposal is to evaluate the county's space needs. Also, the county's existing outstanding leases and other places to accommodate its staff and programming, and how we might be able to repatriate folks back into the courthouse and make the best and highest use of that space for public purpose. I'll piggyback to Wells and Nan to share more, fill in the blanks, especially in the schematic design component of that.
I'll start us off, and then Nan can fill in any blanks I might have missed. But Katie, this is Wells Squire, Anderson Hollis Architects. And Katie did a wonderful job of summarizing the overall scope. Having worked with the county back in 2015, leading up to the election and working to prepare a, you know, sort of an understanding programmatically of what the Justice Center would require, we're looking to pick up where we left off with information that has evolved and changed over time. So Katie nailed it. Really starting off in phase one of three to look at space needs assessment that was prepared back in 2015 to see how that's evolved based on updated data and more information that has become available since then to sort of confirm that the assumptions made then were correct, and if they're not, correct them now. And there's a lot of additional input from stakeholders that will be looking to solicit to support that study. The second phase is the initial SD, as you mentioned, Katie, and that's where we take this information. And hopefully, this will work out in, with the scheduling of the due diligence with regard to the two prospective sites. But we would then work to develop, you know, an actual layout for this updated program in the form of preliminary floor plans and massing studies and even elevations and visualization of what this building would look like. And that is to kind of an initial schematic design level. That's the first of three main design phases. But it really gives us a good opportunity to investigate what the building would look like and how it would actually lay out and conform to the site upon which it would be situated. And then lastly, yes, we would do an analysis of the existing courthouse to identify opportunities for new program uses where that building could, you know, be repurposed essentially for other county needs or uses in another way. So we want to look at the feasibility of that and the opportunities and constraints as related to how that building could be reused for other uses.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any questions on the scope of the contract? I can tell you about the estimated cost and funding.
Yeah, can you run through that for us, please, Katie?
Yep. So the total estimated cost for this contract is $178,000. The state of Colorado, through the Department of Local Affairs, would cover 35% of that cost. And so $62,300. So the county would be responsible of that total amount for $115,000. I should clarify, the county is responsible for the full amount and it seeks reimbursement from the state after it pays. This is through the Energy Impact, the acronyms, Energy Impact Assistance Fund Grant, Energy Impact Mineral Assistance Fund, yes.
I think it's Energy and Mineral Impact Assistance.
Thanks. Thank you.
Let's all try to keep that straight.
That was the Tier One grant that we received from DOLA under that program.
Okay, wonderful. Commissioner Mudge and Commissioner Glenn, do you have any questions on this scope of work?
I don't.
I don't have anything.
Katie, I just wanted to ask a question here of Nan and Wells. You know, the big push with the Justice Center is our need to assess the jail and the issues in the jail with the ADA compliance and the safety of the jail. And that has been an ongoing problem for a while. So I want to make sure that we highlight that or focus on that. Can you talk through that a little bit with us about what the focus is with that jail and that schematic and space needs?
Wells, do you want to speak to that? Or do you want me to? Well, so you may be muted.
I'm muted here and I'm having internet issues at the moment. So Nan, if you could start, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Yeah, Commissioner Marcello, that's absolutely embedded in this initial phase of the design. So there will be a certain number of, for instance, jail beds that will need to be, or jail cells that will need to be accessible. The entire facility, from the main entry to the fire exits, will need to be accessible. Wherever the public, and really, for that matter, staff spaces need to be accessible. So all of that is embedded in the design process for sure. So that, at the end of the day, the, both facilities, the courthouse and the jail, will meet the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements.
Thank you. Wells and Nan, you know, we are going into somewhat of a scary future and position with our projected revenues from the environmental reaction to the COVID pandemic. Will the schematic for the jail and current courthouse facility also, and repurposing of that courthouse facility also accommodate for that in this work? Or will we, how will we incorporate that planning and future projection and forecasting?
Wells, are you there? You want me to?
I'm back, and I apologize for that. Actually, I had a dog that unplugged my computer. I have a 12-week-old puppy. So full disclosure, I apologize for that. Commissioner Marcello, I just want to make sure I understand that question clearly. And certainly, these are new and unprecedented times that we're all experiencing. And if I understood your question correctly, you're asking how our work to update the programming and the schematic design for the project might be influenced by just the current state of circumstances. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Well, that's a good point. And again, I think we're all learning from this day to day. But I would just emphasize that that would absolutely be a priority in terms of our facilitating discussions with all stakeholders to make sure that we're considering how to manage this. You know, we have heard a lot about how different sort of detention facilities are dealing with, or struggling really with, you know, the spread of COVID-19. And so we're going to need to take that into consideration. Absolutely. Short answer is yes. That would be at the forefront of the discussions we would bring to the stakeholder group to clarify further how we could incorporate into the design, even the schematic design for this project. I hope that answers your question.
Can I pile on a little bit there, Wells, too? Because
Please do. Thank you.
This was also a question, actually, back in 2015, 2016, because money was tight then, money is tight now. That hasn't changed. And I think what is incumbent upon us as designers is to say, to work with you all and the courts and the sheriff to come up with, okay, what is the absolute bare bones must have? And then how do we design a facility that could grow to add, whether it's jail beds or additional conference spaces or whatever the lesser needs are. But we have to work with you all hand in glove to figure out what's, where do we start? And then how can we design so that if, in the future, more money becomes available, it's easy to add on?
Thank you, Nan. That's a great answer.
Yeah, thank you. I think that answers my question, Nan. I think we know right now at this point, if we have to go through, I just, you know, want to make sure that we're understanding the prioritization of our top need right now is a jail facility, because we're spending so much money with, and putting so much risk out there with transporting those inmates. You know, on top of increasing the likelihood of the spread of COVID, we're also putting people at risk by being on the road. We're spending money being on the road, wear and tear on vehicles, all those kinds of things. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're incorporating that as a top priority as we go into starting some of the more in-depth planning phases of the Justice Center project.
Totally on that page. Yep.
Wonderful. Commissioner Glenn and Commissioner Mudge, do you have any further questions at this point?
Sorry, that wasn't working. I don't have any other questions. I do appreciate you bringing up that point, though. I appreciate acknowledging it. And I agree. I think, you know, this is a project that we need to try to continue to move forward to reduce the county's liability through multiple circumstances and risks that are put upon us. So, thank you. And what is the title of this? So I can get that, I'm sorry, so I can get that motion correct for this separate contract?
I think we've just been referring to it as the contract to perform a needs assessment, preliminary, initial schematics, and backfill plan.
Okay.
Head of law, but.
All right. I'll move to approve the engagement in the contract with Anderson Hollis for the needs assessment, the initial schematics, and backfill plan for the existing Lake County courthouse.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Glenn, do you have any further discussion?
No, I have nothing.
Commissioner Mudge?
No, thank you.
Okay, with a no further discussion and a motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. With that, we have two ayes and one opposed. To move forward with this schematic and planning contract with Anderson Hollis, we will get these signed and recorded and back to you soon. Thank you for joining us today, Nan and Wells. We appreciate it.
Thanks so much, all. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Ditto. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the emergency elevator repair. Commissioner Glenn forwarded us some information on the repair and maintenance for the elevator. Commissioner Glenn, do you want to walk us through that?
Yeah, apparently, this is, these parts are the original elevator. They're guides for the rollers, and they have worn out. We, we need to get this fixed due to ADA requirements. And I'm pretty sure Crystal's in the loop on this. She's mentioned in the letter. And where to send the, send the down payment, as it's called. It's half the initial price, so. And then that, to me, is the most important, getting this on the schedule so that we can get it fixed.
Thank you. Thanks for taking the lead on that, Commissioner Glenn. We do appreciate it. Crystal, do you want to jump in here and talk to us a little bit about the budgeted, the expected cost of the repair? And give us a recommendation of where we can take this unbudgeted expense from?
Sure. I don't have the invoice up in front of me, but I think it was just shy of $20,000. Is that correct, Commissioner Glenn?
The down payment would amount to $9,680.
Okay, thank you. I did reach out, per the commissioners, I did reach out to CTSI to see if they're, you know, if anything would qualify for an insurance claim. I haven't received anything back, but my guess would be that, no, this is normal wear and tear, especially. and tear, especially as old as the elevator is. I believe that it was installed in 1955. So parts wear out and have to be replaced over time. I would recommend that we go ahead and, and budget-
I think maybe do all kinds of other things.
Maintenance budget under the courthouse repairs and maintenance, and just keep it there for, for tracking. And at the end of the year, if we need to do a supplemental budget, we can, we can make those adjustments then.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. Sorry, something weird is going on with my screen here. Commissioner Mudge or Commissioner Glenn, do you have any additional information or questions?
No, I don't. I'm sorry. Some, my, my screen is flipping out, too. I don't have any questions. I'll make a motion to move ahead with the elevator repair at the courthouse.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion from Commissioner Glenn or Commissioner Mudge?
Nope.
I have nothing.
Okay. Thank you for taking the lead on this, Commissioner Glenn. We appreciate it. Well, I appreciate it a lot. Thank you for bringing this to us. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Wonderful. Crystal, we will forward you that invoice to get that repair started and get the ball rolling. And I think with that, we will move into-
Kayla, just one thing on that. I believe it is a, like a work order contract and requires signatures. So you all will, will sign that correct, and then I'll get it signed by Thies and Krupp, and we'll get that recorded as well.
Commissioner Glenn, do you know if I need to sign that contract? Or is that something you would sign, or is your name on it?
It, it actually has my name on it, and I think that's only because I've worked with Chris in the past on getting documentation. So I was just a contact that he happened to have. If we need to have that rewritten with one of the commissioners' names, I'm sure we can, we can send that back and have that updated.
Yeah, Crystal, if you-
Yep.
Go ahead, Commissioner Glenn, sorry.
It's got your name on here, Crystal. And then, next to it, it says Signature of Branch Representative, I guess.
That would be Thies and Krupp.
Okay. Uh, we can, we can fix this work order and make it work for, for our needs as well, I think.
I was going to say, I can, we can make a formal motion to authorize Crystal to sign, to sign.
Okay.
Since we formally approved, I think. So we don't, we can just keep it moving quickly.
Sure. That will work.
Okay, I'll, I'll move to authorize Crystal Hewlett to sign the contract with, what's the name? I'm sorry.
Thies and Krupp.
Thies and Krupp. On behalf of the commissioner.
I'll second that motion.
Wonderful. So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion from Commissioner Mudge or Commissioner Glenn?
No.
No.
Okay, and none from myself. With that, all those in favor to allow Crystal Hewlett to sign on behalf of the board for the elevator repair with Thies and Krupp? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much for working on that, Crystal and Commissioner Glenn. We appreciate it. Thank you for doing that. So with that, we will move into our next topic, which is our, our meeting with the Board of Health. And I will hand it over to Colleen Nelson, who is our Director of Public Health at this point.
Hey. Thank you. Wow, I apparently didn't talk for five minutes, and I got all choked out. But thank you so much. So I would like to move into our Board of Health, and I just want to recognize who is currently here for our Board of Health. So it looks like Commissioner Marcela is here, Commissioner Glenn, I believe Cornelia Patty is here, Steve Boyle is here, as well as Kim Jackson. So we do have all five members of our board currently here. So thank you for that. I did put in the chat the agenda. I apologize, I'm having some issues on my end and getting some information out, and I realize that I am a little delayed. But we do have the, kind of, we're following our normal format on that. And so, once again, I'd just like to welcome everyone. So obviously, if you're not interested in what's happening in the Board of Health, or what we're doing, moving forward, then obviously you don't need to stay for this portion of the meeting. But so, the first thing is our usual report from Paul Clarkson, Director of Building and Land Use.
I have nothing to report.
Great, thanks, Paul. Second, we have Jackie Littlepage, our Director of Environmental Health.
I would like to request a Board of Health public hearing to be scheduled sometime in late June to hear variance requests for two septic systems. And I'll need at least 20 days, 20 business days' notice so that I can get out the required written notifications to adjacent properties for those folks. So I kindly request that we schedule a Board of Health public hearing.
Jackie, when would you like that? Like, the first week of June? Sooner? Like, where are you at? So we can kind of talk about dates.
So, the end of June. So let me pull up my calendar here.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. Yeah, you have to push out the notice first, and then, yes. Sorry about that.
Yes, no, that's okay. So for me, it looks like the last week of June, which would be, the, well, either the 29th, 30th, or into July 1, 2, 3. I don't know how busy that week is for Board of Health members, but that one's open for me.
Jackie, go ahead. Sorry, Colleen.
Oh, I was just going to ask, is that normally a meeting that we schedule in the evening time versus during the day?
Um, the two property owners are pretty flexible so far, and so I don't anticipate any issues. So I would say that that is up to the Board of Health to decide what time they want. And then we just post it back to those property owners that this is the date and time of your public hearing. And they are requested to attend their own public hearing. And if there's any adjacent property owners or anyone who cannot attend, they are allowed to submit their public comments in writing to be heard by the Board of Health. And I can read those out and present them if other folks aren't able to join.
Jackie, this is Kayla. I have a quick question for you here. I, I was wondering the process for going through a public hearing, hearing for a variance for those septics. I'm assuming that these are things that can't be done administratively. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I, I think the 29th of June would be okay. I just would like to throw that one out there.
Great.
Anybody else from the Board of Health feel that June 29th will work for them?
29th works for me. It's way far out, so nobody can catch me. So I can, I can make it.
Okay.
I can be there.
What time, Jackie?
That's up to you all. We could say 1 o'clock, or if that's a regular Board of Health, or, I'm sorry, County Commissioners, maybe 2 o'clock. I don't, I don't know what your schedule looks like.
We don't currently have a meeting scheduled for that day, because it's the third Monday of the month. So we can, we can schedule this for 1 o'clock on the 29th.
Sounds good to me.
All right. So if you want to send out a calendar invite, I can put that on the calendar for us, and we can coordinate getting a Zoom link set up, or whatever that looks like for us at that point.
Would be great. And because it's a, a public hearing, I believe it would need to be recorded and all that good stuff. Help with that.
Yeah, Paul, could you help us with the coordination of posting that and the meeting venue for that? Like, we've done with the Planning Commission and other posted meetings that we, public hearings that we have done for the Land Use Department, Building and Land Use Department?
Certainly.
Awesome. All right. Sounds great.
Thanks, Paul.
Yes, thank you.
And Jackie, can you just give us a little background why we need a variance on these properties?
Yes. One of them is a new build proposed in Twin Lakes Village, and it's required variance because the new build's well is within 100 foot setback to their septic system. And by State Red 43, it states that septic systems cannot be built within 100 feet of that well. So it would require Board of Health's approval if so chosen to allow that homeowner to build within that setback, knowing that they are taking on that personal liability and risk that their septic system would be close to their well. That one, the consideration for the board to think about then is, it would also not just be that homeowner there, it could possibly fall on, I'm sorry, homeowners that would come after that if the property was ever to sell again. The second property is a, an existing property that was built without any building permits, without any septic permits. And they are now going for the variance to accept their illegal vault. And here in Lake County, our regulations state that a vaulted system requires a variance. So those are the two that we have as of today that need this variance process.
Great. Thank you, Jackie. Is there anything else as far as reports that you'd like to share?
Do we need to discuss or let them know the process of businesses opening, or anything?
Yeah, if you want to share that.
Okay, sure. So this morning, we were discussing-
Because it's falling into your wheelhouse right now? Then yes, if you wanted to share. I know a lot of folks have been on multiple calls, on commissioners' calls, and kind of tracking. But I think it's important just to bring it back up so they understand the division of how we're doing this.
Sure. So this morning, we were discussing, again, as we open up businesses or opportunities for different venues to open with, under the Safer at Home or new public health orders, what that would look like. We specifically discussed hotels and short-term rentals and possible guidance documents that we can be using to offer as the protocols under which they would open or resume services. We've discussed the potential dates for allowing those businesses to open up. As of today, you know, it sounded like June 1st is still the most feasible date to allow hotels and, as short-term rentals, to open to general public outside of Lake County, just because we still have a lot of work that needs to be done behind the scenes, creating those protocols, creating that process, and making sure that we have that set and ready to receive those protocol applications and then issue those license or acceptance letters to allow them to operate. So that was for that one. Retail food establishments is another set of businesses that we are working on behind the scenes. Governor Polis's current timeline is, he's set to give some kind of an update on May 25th. That is a Monday, and that is Memorial Day. That date is currently his date of when he will give a decision as to if retail food will open up to dining or not statewide. So at this point in time, we are working on some guidance documents to have at the ready in case he says go, restaurants can open up. We want to have that guidance ready, because historically, Governor Polis has given some dates and said, go ahead, and then the guidance documents don't come until several days later. So we're trying to get some guidance documents ready. And if for any reason he pushes out his okay with some guidance documents, that would be spectacular, and we would be using whatever comes out. I think that's it on my end.
Great. Thank you, Jackie, so much. So, moving on to my report, if you will, COVID-19, as all of you are highly aware, we're currently in a pandemic. And the fact is that most of you have been on multiple calls over the last couple of weeks. I asked specifically, specifically for the Board of Health to be present for the update from Dr. Lisa last Tuesday. We are finding that Dr. Lisa will update the B O C C on Tuesdays at 1:00 PM with all of the latest data from, you know, the week before, so that we're tracking appropriately. Obviously, if you're able to make that as the Board of Health, so you just can kind of stay in the loop of what that looks like, but obviously, no. And we are working on a document that we can share out. So I'm actually going to make it known right now that, that I will send that out to the Board of Health specifically, so you can just get that update on the data and where we're at. So as of right now, we have pushed out three public health orders during this pandemic. The latest one is the Safer at Home, which is the, you know, phase we're in now, kind of following in line with the governors. What Jackie was talking about is some of the future businesses that we are looking to open. But because of the Safer Home, we have been able to process and open over 40-plus businesses here in Lake County. We are using our Environmental Health team for that. There is a form that folks fill out. And then, any questions or anything they need, we ask them to email EnvirmentalHealth@co.lake.us. It's been working really well. We are increasing our staffing for the next phase, if you will, knowing that there's opportunity for hotels, motels, short-term rentals, and possibly restaurants, bars. And so, to Jackie's point, we are setting up guidelines, but we think will work here in Lake County. And Jackie also recognized that currently there aren't any guidelines that have been, like, official guidelines from the governor. But we do not want to wait that long, and we want to make sure that our business community has as much information as possible, so that when that time comes, we're all ready to go, in the sense of, you have the guidance, and actually, you know, feasibly apply that guidance in their business, train up their employees, get their spaces ready. And so that's why we are sticking to that June 1st deadline. When you think about it, that is just two weeks away. So very quick, when you think about the amount of work that's going to be happening on the business end, as well as on the public health end. Does anyone have any specific questions for me before we go into the framework that you guys have seen multiple times? And I will share it on the screen, because that is something I want to officially adopt through our Board of Health, recognizing that this is truly how we've been basing our decisions from the beginning. And I recognize that I'm a week or two or five late, I don't know, in the sense of so much things that you guys have known has been happening so fast and changing and evolving, but we still feel really strongly about this framework. And I want to make sure that we're all comfortable with that, moving forward as our official, you know, document that's adopted from Board of Health.
I got a weird question for you guys.
Yeah.
I saw something on Facebook, but I forget if it was our state. But for Board of Health, if you have a business, restaurant, or hotel that goes into compliance with the regulations that you put out for COVID, do you post any signage that they're COVID-compliant? Would that be something the state's doing?
No. And so part of our business protocol is that they are required to have signage at the door saying what social distancing protocols are. And they're also required to post our acceptance letter that they are following social distancing. So that is, if somebody looks at their front business, they should have both of those things posted.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much.
No, great question, Steve.
Hey, Colleen, it's Lori. I have a question, too, I've been meaning to ask you. How is public going to be informed which businesses are or are not meeting that criteria and open for business?
That's a great question. We haven't come across- Um, that's a great question. We haven't come across anybody that's opened prematurely at this point in time. I don't know, uh, if, is the request that we put a list together of everyone who's been approved and share that? Is, is that sound like appropriate or something you're looking for?
I'm just inquiring, uh, as businesses are being approved on this application process, how is, uh, clearly the business will be informed that they have met the criteria and can open. But what about the community as a whole regarding those businesses?
Yes, so it sounds like you'd like us to publish all of the businesses that currently, um, have gotten their acceptance letters. Like, we can make that part of our communication. So weekly, we do push out a communication to the community every Thursday. Tonight's will go out pretty late. We've got, um, a couple of things uh, kind of on the back burner. And so I think, you know, is that something we're looking to share or is that something that businesses are responsible for? I feel like that's like an additional step, but we may not be able to accurately update that list. So I prefer businesses to, um, market themselves, if you will, saying, hey, we're open, we're available and um, and people should recognize whether or not that there's, uh, an acceptance letter in, you know, their window.
Right, that acceptance letter that we issue is supposed to be posted in their window or on their door so that clients or the public, as if they're entering into a facility, they can see it posted that yes, that, um, business is allowed to operate.
Perfect. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you, ladies.
Yes, because I'm like, the more I'm like thinking about it, right? I was like, oh my gosh, what happens if we miss a business that we said that they were okay to open and they're not on the list and then people are reporting them and everything else. I think it's, uh, more appropriately to educate the community that, hey, look for that letter versus, um, posting a list. So I appreciate that question, Lori, and thank you for resolving that, guys.
Colleen, this is Kayla.
Yeah.
Um, if you have a business that doesn't comply with the proper protocol to open, what is the enforcement like for that business establishment?
Yes, so the ability for any business to open, whether that's in the city and or the county, depending on, you know, which jurisdiction, obviously retail food is something that we license. We know that the city licenses, you know, retail businesses and things like that. So if somebody is out of compliance, um, we would make that decision and obviously we would work through the Board of Health to say these folks are out of compliance. Our recommendation is to close them. We get that vote from the Board of Health that says, yes, we agree. And so it's basically a cease and desist, um, you know, letter. And Jackie, I don't know if you can share more, having had experience with having to close a business that's been out of compliance or something else, not COVID at this point.
Correct. And right now, uh, Governor Polis's office and CDPHG also have a, a process that can help back local county governments. So, uh, if there's a facility that is not adhering to, um, county orders to close, then CDPHG also steps in um, and looks for a cease and desist order. Hopefully it's something that we can resolve locally and, and we will definitely work on a, a case-by-case scenario with each, uh, business owner and try to make sure that we get that rectified, but.
Yeah, obviously the first piece is education and if they're able to correct, you know, whatever that, um, violation is pretty quickly, then, you know, there wouldn't be a reason to close them down. And we we found that with some other, you know, our retail food businesses being like, oh, we recognize that, we can either change it right then on site. If it's something totally, um, is flagrant the right word? Is that, am I using that word right? In, in the sense of like fully violating the order intentionally and not, you know, um, that, that kind of changes how we might go about that. So. Yes.
Hey, Colleen.
Thank you, Colleen.
Uh, Colleen, question for you. Does that mean you guys are going about town, checking on businesses? Uh, do you have to do that or anticipating doing that?
Um, at this point in time, you know, we aren't anticipating doing that. Obviously, people do have the ability to report things to our environmental health email. And then if it's something that we feel that we need to physically go out, we will. At this point in time, as you can imagine, Steve, we're pretty stretched thin and we're kind of relying on, you know, our community and our businesses to be doing, you know, exactly what they say they're doing. And obviously, if we get a complaint and we feel that it's something we need to go out, we will absolutely do that.
Terrific. Hopefully you don't, but, uh, yes, thank you for that answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll just put it out there that, uh, as of today, we have one complaint that a building on Main Street is being used as an unlicensed gym. We're still investigating that and, uh, if that was to come forward further, um, as an actual, um, valid issue that we need to, uh, try to shut down, we would definitely be notifying the city and the county um, and trying to figure out if that is acting as a business or if it's just, uh, some folks being rebels. But we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
And so, um, with that, I am going to share my screen and, um, bring up that framework so we can have an official decision on that. And I don't, I, I cannot imagine, this is the first time, having seen you guys on multiple calls and, um, having, uh, us, um, do this piece. So let me, sorry, I gotta minimize this. So basically, sorry. Can you guys see this okay?
Yeah.
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. I apologize. Um, we have some construction going on outside and, um, our building is currently vibrating, so I'm like trying to hear and not, not shake and, and my, um, screen is a little funky. But basically, like I said, you guys have seen this and basically we've now, you know, put it on our official letterhead. We put, you know, if, obviously I can change this, but I just wanted for, um, sake that Lake County Public Health Agency has, has adopted the evidence-based, data-driven guidelines provided by the Colorado Association of Local Public Health Officers. So that's CALFO, where we mentioned them multiple times. These guidelines allow for best practice, public health approach to relaxing state home orders and other limitations on commerce and social activity. And so when we, sorry, this is kind of funky. So when we talk about, you know, all the things that we're trying to do, we've been talking about like what that new normal looks like. And in order for us to kind of continue to move forward and move into that beginning state, which is like the scheme up, which I've talked about in the sense of, you know, we're on the beginner's slope right now. We, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we weren't on, we weren't even on the chairlift in the sense of we couldn't meet all five of these criteria, but the fact that we have been able to increase our testing, um, have a sustained level of cases, um, as well as, you know, the hospital feeling confident that they can, you know, handle anything currently. Um, and then the other ones being, you know, active monitoring with COVID-19, which we do have the ability to do that. Uh, I would like to share that we have four nurses, um, volunteer nurses that are willing to do contact tracing. We're currently working on a protocol for them and I'll reach out to Lori here, once we kind of have a protocol in place and how we want to bring volunteers on board, uh, as far as that goes. And so I think, um, that's just important to note that we, we recognize that if we have to expand out, we won't need to rely on county resources. We'll have the ability to use these volunteer nurses and to do all the pieces that we need with contact tracing and feel competent with those three additional staff that even if we were to get a major increase, we'll be able to handle that. And so, um, and the last part is a clear protocol in place that requires social distancing and assist with case definition. And so we do have social distancing, distancing. I, I don't know if I, you know, I'm gonna pick up now. Now, I was gonna pick on Paul and be like, Paul, tell me everything you know about social distancing, right? It's six feet apart. It's wearing your face covering in public. It's touching your hands. It's not touching your face. It's, you know, um, being responsible and, uh, and, you know, all those other things. So I think, you know, I think a lot of folks are really competent with what all of that looks like. And then this is kind of where we're at right now. So this is the stabilization phase. This is our new normal and we're coming into, you know, the green circle. We have been doing some openings, like we said, 40-plus businesses have already been able to open. We're working on guidelines for, um, almost majority of the rest of our businesses. So I'm thinking by June 1st, we actually might, you know, obviously with some decreases in where folks are able to do because of the social distancing protocol, you're only allowed to have a certain amount of folks, you know, in your facility that will go for, you know, restaurants and, um, we'll talk with hotels and motels about what their capacity might look like. Recognizing that that's the new normal. It's not like a full, the doors wide open, business back to normal. It's still, you know, slow increments working towards um, what we can and can't do, especially in the face of social distancing. And so if we scroll down, you know, it talks about all the things you guys already know, but this is a phase reopening currently with our safer at home. We are at a group size gathering of, of 10. And, um, you know, if we're able to do everything well and we can move into the next phase, which is like the intermediate phase, that group size might increase. We are currently following the governor's orders that to groups of 10, limiting things to group of 10. We are comfortable with that. Doesn't necessarily apply to businesses in the sense of depending on their square footage. Public in general and even, um, as many of you are aware with our special events that, you know, the, the decision had come down that they are, um, canceled for the summer, because even if we did everything well and we got to group sizes of 250, we still would be, we still wouldn't have the ability to hold, um, a large event here. And obviously, we want to be mindful. We want to go slow. We don't want to go backwards and we just want to take this one step at a time. So this is where we're at. I feel like you guys have seen this framework. So basically what happens, you know, Dr. Lisa and I are in contact as well as the hospital. We talk, um, multiple times a week just to check in, see where we're at. And then we kind of look at where we're at as, um, you know, in these phases and, um, kind of make the decisions. And at this point in time, like I said, you know, our intent is truly to go slow, that we don't have to go backwards. I think it's easier for us to slowly open things versus having to go backwards and close things. So um, this is the framework. I, like I said, I know that many of you see it multiple times, but I would like to officially adopt it. Um, as, uh, Board of Health, recognizing that this is the framework that public health is using. Does anyone have any questions about the framework?
I got one, Colleen.
Yeah.
The, uh, the thing you talked about with, uh, volunteers, uh, do, do they have to be required to take that six-hour class that CDPHG is, has online? I think it was a six-hour class on tracing.
So we do have a whole entire protocol that they will have to take. I don't know if the C, C1 is the one, um, will actually do because CDPHG has come out with their own guidance. And so I would think that we would do the state because as you can imagine, um, nationally, we're not all doing things the same as that way. It will be a robust training program for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions around the framework? Like I said, I, I recognize that you guys have seen these, this multiple times. It's just now in our letterhead.
Yeah, I think it looks great, Colleen. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
No, I thought I had a question, but I don't think I do.
Okay.
Actually, I do, even though I've seen this a million times. You're right.
Yeah.
Um, the, the green dot, the blue square and the black diamond.
Yes.
Size, uh, for the green dot is 10. The group size for, uh, the blue square is 25 to 50. And the, um, black diamond is 250.
Yeah.
What about the gaps? So what about like between, uh, 10 and 25? And what about 51 to 249? What?
No, I absolutely understand what you're saying and I think, um, you know, this is just like a framework in the sense of, you know, there will be ability to adapt things as they come and to kind of expand between those different parameters between, like you said, between, you know, 10 and, and 24 and 50 to 249. Like I think it's just kind of giving you that overview of what to expect. And, and recognize that, you know, as public health and working with the governor, you know, in the state, that, you know, we'll see what those recommendations are as they come down. So it might be even smaller, right? We might not make a jump from 10 to 25. We might make a jump to, you know, 15 and then, you know, 25 the following week or whatever that looks like. We just don't know. It's just, um, it's just a guidance framework at this point in time.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I don't think it was ever mentioned.
All right. If there are no other questions, I, um, is there anyone on the Board of Health who would like to make a motion?
I motion to adopt.
Okay, Steve. Anyone want a second?
I'll second. This is Kayla.
Okay, I'll roll call. So Kayla Marcello?
Aye.
Steve Boyle?
Aye.
Cornelia Patty? We'll come back to Cornelia. Mark Glenn?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark. Kim Jackson?
I don't see Kim on the participant list yet.
She was up on City Clerk. She was here with City Clerk. Did she get bumped off? Cornelia?
Aye.
Okay. Cornelia?
Aye.
Thank you. So it sounds unanimously that this is the framework. Obviously, that's what we've been working with. I, I absolutely appreciate your support as we, um, have officially adopted through the Board of Health. I think that just helps us continue to use this and everyone's comfortable with that. So I do thank you for that. Um, the next piece of business, believe it or not, as much as COVID-19 is, uh, with us, um, is our public health improvement plan. So if you guys recall, that is something we're required to do every five years. We did make a decision in 2017 to follow the hospital because they have to do a community health assessment every three years. And so believe it or not, our health assessment is coming up this year, that we are looking at ways that we can be creative because so much of this is going to happen, have to happen virtually initially, until we kind of get through the summer and see what that happens. I just want to to make you aware that we are looking, um, at what that public health improvement process will look like. We'll do it in conjunction with the hospital and Build a Generation will help us with that, just like we had done it in 2016 to have it done by 2017. And so, or actually, excuse me, 2017, that's right, 2020. I got, I can do some math. And, um, so basically that is just giving you an update that even though so much of our focus is on COVID-19, there's so many things that still have to keep rolling in order for us to do it. And so the other piece of that is, you know, this might be beneficial in the sense of a lot of focus is on health right now and people might be more um, inclined to kind of participate in some of the surveys we might push out. We in on what they think priorities are here in our community. I would like to note that there is a lot of, um, cuts happening at the state level. Currently, I believe we're at 3.4 billion. Um, that needs to be cut out of the state budget, recognizing all of the impacts that COVID-19 has been, um, what's the right word? Uh, affecting, I think, you know, the state budget and what they're looking at for 2021. We are looking at our public health budget to see what that looks like, just so, as you guys, um, may remember, almost a third of our budget does come from grants. And so we're closely monitoring what is happening at the state level, specifically the Joint Budget Committee, which is currently meeting. So if anyone has time or wants to look at some things, we, uh, you know, and see something that you might be interested in and or that I may not be aware of, please know that I'm available. Always open for any feedback that you guys have, especially around this response. Um, I do apologize. I feel like you guys have been, um, guys being the Board of Health have been, you know, kind of on, you know, the sides and cheering and I haven't brought you in fully, um, if you will. So I appreciate coming together today and kind of getting back on the same page and, um, going from there. The last piece is, you know, does the Board have anything specifically that they need from me at this point in time or anything that you would like to see going forward? Um, once again, on Tuesdays at 1:00 PM, we are reporting to the BOCC out of our weekly update. I don't know, you know, obviously, I don't necessarily need all of you guys to be on that, but it's just a great way. And I will ensure that I get the data that Lisa is pushing out weekly so that you are informed in case something does come up and we need to bring you back faster or, um, together, because obviously our, our obligation, um, is quarterly. When I'm ready to change the public health order, I will ensure that you guys get to see it, um, prior to going out to public, so that you recognize kind of where we're at and what we're doing and if you have any questions and/or, um, feedback, because that would be important if you are seeing something that I'm not recognizing. So I will make sure that happens for our next public health order, which our kind of one ends on May 31st. So I'm already starting to kind of look at some of the pieces I need to change. It won't be drastic. But, um, it will allow for a little bit more opening of some of our local businesses.
Thanks, Colleen. I have just one quick question, um, with, with the guidance. So I know that the guidance goes up to 250, um, and then at the 250 mark, what happens after that?
Yeah, I think it's a great question. I think when you look at that guidance, you follow it all the way across. Right now, that, that projects us out to maybe four to eight months. Or, excuse me, um, no, is it 16? I had to look at it really quick, but I think it's 16, right? It's four to eight weeks, then four to eight weeks. So eight plus eight, that's like 16 weeks. Um, and so that puts us kind of through the summer and into the fall. I think it will be, I personally, on a personal note, I think just from what I'm seeing, the expectation is that we're going to have a spike in the fall, no matter what. And so I can't imagine us, um, after 250, like I think that, that will be extended. I think, you know, we might be in this beginner phase for, you know, two plus months. Um, prior to even getting into the next one, depending on, you know, Governor Polis and all the data that's coming in. And I think, you know, obviously there's going to be gradual increments of increasing folks, um, but recognizing that until there's some effective treatment and or a vaccine that, you know, group sizes are just going to continue to be limited. It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense to bring people into a large space, especially if, you know, the infection rates continue to go up. And so I'm guessing, yeah, I'm guessing as we get into that expert phase, we'll get more guidance to say, hey, what does the new normal look like for the next like three months? And obviously, you know, relying on CALFO, we all have input. We being public health directors have input into that. And I think that question will come up pretty quickly as we get closer to the end of the summer.
Cool, thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. Actually, I do have one other question.
Yes.
And it's just a curiosity, because I just want to understand. Does our hospitals see or would our hospitals see a reimbursement from putting COVID onto a death certificate?
No, I think there's been a misnomer out there about, you know, providers receiving like additional funding, you know, for a certain diagnosis. I don't necessarily think, I understand that there's, you know, just like our businesses, just like our county and, you know, city, there's funding out there available in the sense of if you, you know, have been affected by COVID. So obviously, if they have, you know, an increase in COVID patients and, you know, which changes, you know, the amount of PPE that they're going through, you know, versus kind of traditional pieces. So I don't necessarily think that that is the intent of, you know, I mean, I've obviously heard of like, oh, they're only doing, you know, they being other folks out in the world, they're only doing this to get more money into their hospital. And I think that's unfortunate that if there are folks doing that, I think it's just a matter of, you know, how they're tracking so that they can see that they have been affected by those numbers if folks, you know, are dying in their hospital or within that health system, whatever that health system is. Recognize that, you know, they've put a lot more energy and resources towards one group particular, you know, for a pandemic, essentially for, you know, what's happening right now. So it isn't like, it's not like the hospital gets any more money. It's more of the recognition that healthcare facility and/or system, because right now, we don't have that here, that they can link it to show that, yes, they've been treating COVID, but not as a, but not as a, hey, let's just call everyone COVID, so we get more money, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I just have seen a lot of, you know, information out there of, hey, so-and-so died from a car accident and we're going to write it down as a COVID death because they had COVID antibodies or whatever. And so that the numbers are skewed because of that kind of reporting.
Yeah, I think that's an unfortunate practice. That's not happening here. And always like, I don't, you know, not in those systems, I don't know who's making those decisions, but it's not something that's, you know, happening here.
Cool, I don't have anything else.
I see Patrick has his hand up for a question, maybe?
Great, yes, let me know. I don't, I can never see the hand. I don't know where that is.
Go ahead, Patrick. We can't hear you, Patrick. Sorry, Patrick. I don't think we can hear. Okay. I don't see anything else in the chat from him either, so, sorry about that.
Don't worry. So at this point in time?
His microphone wasn't working. He's ready to speak now.
Thanks, Miguel.
Are the individual offices in the courthouse going to have to adhere to what the businesses are going through?
Great question, and we'll actually talk about it at our next elected and directors meeting, which starts in approximately eight minutes. We're just finishing up the Board of Health call.
Hey, thanks.
No, I appreciate it, Patrick. I think it's a great question, but we'll touch on that in the next meeting.
All right.
Okay, if there's nothing else from the Board of Health, on my agenda says next Board of Health meeting. We need to set it. Obviously, we set one for June 29th to follow up on the variance process. Obviously, most of the things that we can kind of do moving forward with me just showing you kind of where we're at and making sure that I'm receiving your feedback appropriately, like with the public health order. You know, we don't need to kind of meet in a group unless there's something big. And obviously, if there are any things that come up, you know, within, you know, the next month and a half, we'll need to convene. But I feel confident at this point that we're at June 29th for our next meeting. And with that, I would say we are done.
Cool, thank you so much, Colleen, and thank you everybody for convening today.
Yes, thank you. You guys are doing amazing.
Thanks, we'll see you guys at 2:30.
Okay, thanks. Bye.